Christine, will you check and make sure that the sound's on, call me?
Testing, one, two. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls.
Headlight is on.
Thanks for that.
Oh, it's that time here, isn't it?
Most people don't.
Is it working?
Um, I'm not getting my... It says up, I think. It says slide.
So we don't need to...
Does it show that anybody's watching? It should be up on the left-hand.
Yeah.
Okay, one.
Mm-hmm.
Two. Okay, you're good then.
Okay. Can you hear?
No, can you hear us?
Prosecutor.
Ah, she can hear.
We're good.
Yeah, it's just delayed.
Delayed, okay. Okay, we'll just call this such a meeting to order. Chris, would you read us in the page?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I understand that the sheriff is attending, so if you want, look through page five.
You let me do roll call, roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, roll call.
Ron Bacon.
Here.
Pat Brooks. Here. Rob Dimmick.
Here.
Brad Overton.
Here.
Richard Reed.
Benson.
Greg Richmond.
Here.
Chris Westside.
Here. Sorry about that. I'll just look into below, all of that, so. Okay, so we can turn to page five.
And the reason he's not telling us is because basically he said that he didn't make changes to his budget and that you guys know where he stood on the personnel report and he didn't feel like there was a need to present anything.
Okay, so does, anyone have any questions or concerns? We're going to look at page five is the sheriff's budget itself. So, not, we'll go to the J O, which is page 23. Any questions? Okay, Central Dispatch is 22.
Look at the director as new, isn't it?
It was new last year.
It was new last, yeah.
He did a half-year last year.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And then, lid, it's 40. Any questions there?
In the lid, have you moved all the deputies that you wanted to?
Yes, but they're not on here yet.
They're not on here yet.
I have them done on my sheet, but I haven't printed them yet.
Okay.
In case of other changes tonight, I didn't want to print and then print again.
Mm-hmm. So this is basically current.
Yes.
Numbers. Okay. And... Just a minute, 42.
That'll, you don't have to look at that page. That'll be, whatever it will hold, it's kind of a grant that comes in to fund one and you put the maximum amount out of holding the rest of its budget. Bunch of different things coming in.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay. Can move to auditor.
I told him, but he's not in here yet, so if you want to look at the prosecutors, he's not.
He's not coming also, yeah.
Same reason, said he didn't make adjustments and...
So that's, that's page nine. No. Okay. So, he said, Crystal said he didn't make any major changes in that, so it's basically the same, so.
Yeah, all of his funds were the...
He did request a new office equipment.
What is he saying, Greg?
Office equipment on page 24.
Oh, you're already up to 24, sorry.
Yeah. Oh, I thought you...
We weren't there yet.
I thought you were moving.
Yeah, that's why we were asking.
I thought...
Because he didn't have any changes.
Yeah.
If he does have, I'm sure he needs a printer or something, I can't remember what it was.
Okay, office equipment, 1,000, yeah.
That's a change.
Okay, and then, page 61, pre-tile.
He asked for a new position, didn't he?
Yes.
Yes.
By eliminating a lot of other things.
Yep, I see that now.
Yes, but that'll be discussed later.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay. Go back to page 22. Auditor, page two. Mr. Nitsch, are you ready?
I am.
Okay. We're ready. Do you have any questions?
Not on page 15, I mean on page two. Page 15. Data processing moved up a whole lot on... Contract services data processing. 371 to 400.
No.
Okay.
That was the published, you're looking at the wrong column.
Okay.
His requested budget is the column you should be looking at.
Mm-hmm, 151.
Yes.
Okay.
Other than vendor increases, my budget is pretty much the same, other than my request for raises. We operate off a shoestring budget as it is.
That book will be 44.
It's the same, and elective...
Basically the same.
Time is also the same.
All the same, yeah. Okay. Any questions? Anybody? Thomas, Tim?
Uh, yeah, I've got several comments. I was planning on having a whole lot more, but out of self-respect, I won't bring them up. I just want to make you all aware that the auditor's position is the most grossly underpaid position in county government, uh, which is one of the reasons why I've asked for the raise that I have for Barbie and myself, as well as the staff, my coworkers. Last year, over 20 auditors quit across the state of Indiana, out of 92 counties. I don't think I have to explain to you, that's more than 20%. The overwhelming reason is pay, cooperation, and communication. The auditor's office basically has four offices that operates out of it and is overwhelmed and has a, probably one of the largest responsibilities out of all the county offices. So, i-if you're wondering why I was asking for the raises, I was, that's the reason. If we can justify certain raises or pays for certain people and not others, I find that a little hard to swallow. So, with all due respect, I will, I've come to peace with myself about this. You're going to make your decisions. I hope that you have the understanding and accept my request for raises.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So next will be the Personnel Committee report. Somebody got a copy in that instance and see it. So do we need to go through each one individually then?
Yes, and I mean typically, we've had a member read the findings. If you want me to do it, I'll do it, or if one of the members wants to...
You may read.
Sure.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't have to read it verbatim, I mean, you can as well, but they can all read, but...
Right.
But definitely read the recommendation for sure, so.
All right, um, on the highway department, Bobby Howard came in, highway administrator. Uh, his request for the committee recommendation was due to the duties of the position of the similar or greater duties of the lead operator that is classified as an LTCD position. The committee voted unanimously to approve the request. The position would be classified as an LTCD with a 2026-based salary of $53,052. And I think, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, that that's the boss of the shop, and so he's in charge of everybody, just kind of like all the other lead person, and it's a $1,500 difference with that, was that correct?
1,200.
1,200. So, that's, uh, the budget difference will been, or the difference been 1,288, so we recommended to do that, so.
Basically moving him up to a new category.
Yes. Same, he's same thing, but it's, he's doing, doing all the duties that the other head positions are doing.
You actually want me to give you a little more information? So, that, that position was actually put into place after Wagner Erwin Shealy, and the council voted at the time to give that position 1,500 more than the classification below. Not knowing exactly what to do with him, I put him in LTCD, but he was paid less than everybody in LTCD. And Bobby just wants to make sure that he's paid in line with everybody in LTCD.
I was thinking he was in a category below.
Yeah, no, he was actually in...
He's in the same category, just want to make us pay the same as the others.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, uh, next is the Central Dispatch, um, and I believe it's kind of the same thing, the sheriff's request of dispatchers receiving the same longevity increase as the jailers. Uh, and the 2025 dispatcher's longevity was 150 each year. The council voted to increase it to 200 at the budget hearing to increase the jailer longevity to 300 each year. Uh, the recommendation was after the realization of dispatchers and the jailers are currently compensated, uh, the same of the pay that both positions require a similar stressful responsibilities, the committee unanimously increased the dispatcher's longevity to 300 and continue to compensate those employees alike. Uh, the cost of this implement, the additional increase, was $6,650.
Okay, and before we move on, normally you vote on each one as a group.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm...
So you probably want to go back and vote on highway as a group.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize, Ron.
That's okay. I'm new at this too, on this portion of it, so. Okay, so, under highway then.
Someone needs to make a motion.
Yeah, I need a motion to...
To accept.
To accept the recommendation of the committee.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the committee.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion by Greg, second by Rob. All in favor? Motion carried seven zero. Okay, then we'll go back to the Central Dispatch. And, uh, so I need a motion to move the, uh, see, dispatchers with the committee recommendation.
I'll make a motion to accept the committee recommendation.
Okay, motion by Rob, a second. Second by Pat. Okay, all in favor? Motion carry seven zero. Okay, now we go to Superior Court, Rob.
All right. Okay, Judge Wyberg requested to increase the three court reporters that are classified as a COMOTD to the E, uh, so that all reporters are paid from the same classification. The judge stated the council will use funds from the adult probation spare user fee of 2002, and it's not property tax funds, so the total amount needed to all three positions was $8,364. The request was sent to Wes, do I need to read all that, Crystal?
No, I'll summarize it.
Yeah, thank you.
So the request was sent off to WS for valuation, and of course, it came back that all court reporters are doing the exact same job and they must be paid the same. So that's the bottom line, so.
WS is Wagner Erwin Shealy, which is basically an HR department that looks at job descriptions and compares.
And so then, the committee recommended, uh, that the court reporter share the same job requirements that should be compensated the same.
Okay. Need a motion to accept the committee.
And that is the same for Superior one and two, so if you just want to make them under the same motion.
Okay.
Okay.
So... Need a motion to accept the committee report on Superior one and Superior two.
I make a motion to accept. They all have the same classification, Superior one and two.
I'll second. Need a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rob. Okay, all in favor? Carry seven zero. Okay, move on to the coroner then.
Okay, uh, the coroner's requested a raise in her salary, had job description attached currently, uh, the office holder was $34,979, less than the chief deputy rate of $1,690. Uh, this request was not sent to Wes. Uh, after discussion, uh, evidence of much higher call volume due to Gateway Hospital and the committee, uh, agreed to suggest a range salary, the 39 to 45, the committee would like the council to discuss aside together. And to kind of go into that a little bit more is the, you know, in the past years with the hospital, with the women's hospital, the rate has tremendously went up, uh, down there, uh, because of the hospital being in Warwick County, so they're making a lot of calls, Deaconess of Gateway, uh, Women's Hospital, and, and so the, the call volume is a lot more than it has in the past. But this was not, uh, so we just discussed that, and that's the reason why we wanted the, the board here to, you know, finalize and see what they had to say.
From what I understand, she has found places to move money from to fund this.
Yes, she's not asking, she's actually still asking for a decrease in her budget in order to fund it, correct?
She's going to become more full-time.
Yes.
I'll add to the comment, the discussion we had in the personnel meeting, that, um, the coroner explained to us that she referred to undocumented deaths, um, she has to document them, and there was a little discussion on that, and, and anyway, then we learned that what it is, is documenting them is basically explaining the cause of death. And I talked to the former coroner too, Sarah Seaton there, and explained even further that, that what happens is these people are brought into Warwick County Hospital, they're from other counties, and that when they die in Warwick County, it becomes our responsibility as a county to, to report on their death. So that puts a great burden on the coroner to go, I'll say, investigate those deaths in other counties, um, rather than just, you know, certifying them being dead. She has to do her homework.
Right.
So, so I consider it a, a large burden, and I think it was 600 deaths perhaps last year? Yeah, quite a few.
And I'll add on to that, what Deaconess has done the last two years is taken over management, either operating or actually buying, uh, the other local small hospitals. And when I say local, I mean tri-state. We're talking Illinois, Indiana, and Kentucky. So they are now managing or operating, I don't even know what the current number is, how many hospitals that they're taking care of. There's three or four in Illinois, as far down as Marion, Illinois, and, uh, I don't know how far down in Kentucky, I think it's Madisonville.
That falls under our jurisdiction.
If, if, yeah, that's what Deaconess is taking care of. So those patients are moved to mid, or brought up here, sometimes to Midtown, and most of the time to Gateway. So, with their beds on, and if they die here, and it's our responsibility as in the county to do the, uh, investigate that. We, as the county coroner, has to go out and investigate, maybe to Madisonville, maybe to Marion, and actually find out what went on before that patient ever got here and certify that it's, you know, okay. If it's an accident or a trauma, and Sarah, you can help me if I need, there's another one, homicide, yeah, then that investigation gets done here, and that gets quite costly. That then can be, uh, I know in Indiana, it doesn't happen in Illinois and Kentucky though, does it? In Indiana, if it happens, let's say in Gibson County, so it happens in Gibson General, Indiana can bill Gibson County for it, for doing the work. We cannot bill Illinois or Kentucky, so we get stuck with all that. Ms. Seaton, would you like to?
Well, and even deaths that are simple medical deaths.
Yes.
If there's a physician of record, um, if it's an Indiana physician, then they can certify the death.
Right.
But a lot of these deaths, that physician of record is Kentucky or Illinois, they cannot sign an Indiana death certificate.
Correct.
So Alyssa has to.
Yeah.
Has to do that.
And then if they get the patient in the emergency room here, and the emergency room, then the question was, well, why didn't the ER physician here sign the death certificate? Doesn't know anything about the patient, just gets someone, it's thrown into their lap and has no history, no medical, they just die. So, he's, he or she does not want to sign the death certificate, really can't, because they don't have the information they need, so then the coroner has to do it, so that's but stops there. So, that's why the increase of work, and it's much more than when I was coroner 16 years ago, when that hospital first opened. So, uh, so that's the reasoning behind it, so.
And then I think add on the fact that she counted for it in her budget.
Yeah.
And still keeping her budget below last year, right?
Mm-hmm. Right.
And that was able to make savings elsewhere.
Speak of the devil.
And I think, and I think the other thing that to draw the attention to, as we've emphasized, the increased workload is the fact that she was, she, he, whoever will end up, you know, that, let's just refer to coroner's coroner, um, you know, they were making less than the chief deputy.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, I think it's really hard to supervise people, you would think the person in charge would at least, at a minimum, be making more than the people that are reporting to them.
Okay, more discussion? Yeah, is there any more discussion, Alex?
Well, arrange, with the Personnel Committee left this at a range.
Yeah.
So, yeah, somebody needs to make a motion for a salary.
I'll make a motion to approve the 39,520.
I'll second.
Motion by Brad for the 39,520, and a second by Pat.
And I will say one thing, I think that's something that, at least to start with, and then, you know, especially under the circumstances that we're in, I think at least we're getting that position up to the level where they're over that chief deputy, and you know, if this is something that perhaps down the road, where we've got more flexibility with our, you know, funding, which can be said with any of these items, you know, maybe we can review this again down the route.
I feel that's a good point, Brad, to look at it some other time as well. At 39,50, it's still under $20 an hour.
Yeah, exactly, I, I think it's, I think it's meeting that base level. Yeah, just the base of being higher than the chief deputy.
It's not based on a 40-hour week either, though, so, she goes to work.
Right.
You may be on a queso all day long, or two days in a row, it's happening.
Yeah.
So, it's not just an hourly rate.
No, I, I get that, I just...
Okay, gotcha.
Could have to get to that.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion carry seven zero. Okay, Commissioner?
All right. The commissioners requested to rework two positions within their office. Uh, they requested to add a HR position only by eliminating administrative duties to the previous HR administrator. They are also requesting to eliminate the administrative assistant position and fund the assistant to the administrator and HR positions. What, uh, do you want me to go over a little bit of what the assistant administrator request is, you may go over that, Crystal, or?
Well, here, I'll just talk about WS, so, uh, so WS was sent the forms, um, for these two positions, and of course, they came back with recommendation, um, I'm trying to find mine, here it is on the second page, okay. So, the, this is where I was classified, let's see, but removing the administrative charges, okay. So the duties in changing the position to HR manager, we classified the position as a PAT-B exempt position. So the HR position would be PAT-B exempt, and then what did it come back as the HR assistant?
I didn't see anything for the assistant.
It, it came back, hang on. Assistant to administrative HR position classified as a COMAT-D. So basically, they just kind of reworked both positions and changed their classification titles.
So if they reworked the, the assistant position and it has less duties, am I understanding that correct?
No. The HR position has less duties.
Okay.
And the assistant to the HR and administrator has more duties. See, the increase would be the county general for that position would be $3,099, and the decrease, there would be a decrease of $5,405 for the HR, for a total negative to county general of $2,0575, so it's a cost savings.
Right.
We had a long discussion about this at the Personnel Committee meeting. I, what they're trying to do is, is... I think there's a lady, was it Liz? Is that, is that, she's working in there and she's wanting to move to the front desk, is that right? And do, do less, and I think that's, that's where, where the, the one... And I think that's, that's where, where the, the one, the, which position, the HR assistant. So she could help out on both sides, so be Debbie's assistant, kind of help you and, and go both ways, is that right? Okay. The committee agreed to, to do the restructuring of the commissioner's office to, to work more efficiently if needed. That's what they were recommending. They agreed to fund the classification adjustment to position as a COMOTD and change the job title accordingly. So we're kind of putting HR requests at this same time. There's two different things, so you may go over that too.
Right.
Okay. Crystal, you want to go over what Wes on the review on HR, you already kind of did that, correct?
Yeah, so like, so they took the administrative duties off of HR administrator and added those to the front desk administrator. Okay, so now we have HR only classified as a PATB exempt. And then by moving those duties of that administrator part of HR to that front desk position, it reclassified that position up one to COMOTD.
Which that position is getting paid less, right?
The HR position is getting paid less.
Right.
And the assistant to the administrator, HR is going to get paid more.
Right.
One of them went up.
One of them went down.
The two together is negative.
Yes, and the two together is still a negative.
So I'll make a motion to, make a motion to approve the personnel committee report on this recommendation. Motion by Greg to approve both.
Both. I'll second it.
Seconded by Chris. All in favor? Motion carries seven, zero.
Okay, I only want to say on this one that this is, of course, all for 2026. They are on the agenda for September to make these same moves for the remainder of the year.
Next, review of the budget.
I have something else on the personnel, or if I could bring up.
Sure.
The last budget meeting, we talked about, and Chris made a motion about the percentage or when we got all elected officials, you know, and he took the council, then he recommended, you know, that all elected officials would not take the raise. After I, which I made that decision and I voted for it and I thought it was good after I slept that night, I woke up next morning, I called Crystal and I said, how can I change that? I, I think that the, and after I judge and go over my head, you know, and the council, and, you know, we could say we don't want a raise, but I think we need to keep it consistent. It's not that I want 2.5% more, but I think it's more than fair for all elected officials because, you know, they know what they were getting into at the get-go, I understand. But also they hadn't asked for inflation either. So I, I would like to bring that back to the table and, and make it for all elected officials to get that raise.
I could go along with it for all except council.
So is that 2% or 2.5%?
2.5, 2.5.
2.5% for all elected officials?
And for the council, I mean, that's only, how many dollars is that? Maybe 6,000, I mean.
For, for all of the office holders, it was 10,351. For the council, it wouldn't be very much money, but.
And I know on the county council.
I'm sorry?
Keep it all even, is that what we're saying, everybody?
Everyone.
Well, the, the motion by Rob is to give all elected officials the 2.5% raise.
And, and I'd like to, and, and I, I had a couple of people talk to me and I was like, I, I mean, I called Crystal the next morning, I didn't text or anything, I called. And I just, I just felt like, and again, for everybody out here knows, I like thinking about decisions and that was a quick decision on my part. And I like to study and know what's going on. And after I really thought about it, I, I feel like that's the right call. But that, that's my opinion and thank you, Pat.
Well, if you don't do that, and I think you should, the elected officials, if they aren't getting anything, pretty soon the chief deputy is going to surpass.
That is correct.
What the elected officials, so you've got to keep it on an even keel. Just like the coroner wasn't paying as much accordingly as the chief deputy. It got out of whack. So I agree in that. And I would second the motion.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I misunderstood the motion to take the elected officials out. I thought we were just taking the county council out when I voted for it. I wouldn't have voted for it.
I'll agree with Greg's earlier comment, though, that I could support this if we exclude the council.
What did it change?
End of discussion, what Greg and Brad would like for the council not to have it. And, and, you know, I have opinions about that, I'm, I'm fine with that too. But I, I think if we want to keep the county council and further and getting good people here, you know, I don't need the 2.5%. I'm, I'm fine with where I'm at, I understand. But I, I think just keep the books good, keep everything 2.5. If it's going to cost us $100,000, I say yes, keep it back. But we're talking, you know, a few dollars, so. But it's, it's whatever, I, I'm fine. I think we need to give everybody else a raise. That, I think all elected officials need to get 2.5%. And we can go with my, my thing, and if it doesn't pass, then we'll go with, without us.
Okay, I have a motion by Rob and a second by Pat to give all elected officials a 2.5% raise. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
All right.
And Rick vote?
Rick was a yes.
Okay. So it's four to three then?
Yes, four, motion failed, four to three.
Now make your motion, Greg. Okay, I'll make a motion that we give the 2.5% raise to elected officials the same as all employees excluding the county council.
I'll second that. Seconded by Brad to give all elected officials 2.5% raise excluding county council. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries five to two. Two against were Rob and Pat. Okay. Any more? Okay.
So that was two, five to two, right?
Five to two. Right?
Pat and Rob voted.
And Rick.
No, he voted for it.
I wanted to keep it clear, so I.
That's fine. All righty, now, back to the agenda. Here we go. Review of budget.
So typically, I mean, Ron, this is your first time leading.
Yeah.
You, you know, you, you guys talked about freezing budgets, but then going through one at a time and looking if you wanted to add anything in. Is that how we're going to approach it?
That's the following agreement, that's the way I'd like to approach it. Is that a motion? Well, I'll make a motion.
I was just, I was just looking for clarity, that's all.
I understand.
I'll second that.
So we're motioning to freeze other than what you are getting ready to tell me to add back in? Okay.
Okay, motion by Ron, second by Brad. Am I understanding the motion? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries seven, zero. Okay.
So then we usually just start with page one?
Yeah, start that way.
And typically, again, I'll get us going. If, if there wasn't anything specifically discussed or written down, you just, we just flip the page and move to the next one.
I'm looking at, oh, okay, I found it, on the position line. I was overlooking who the position was.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so page one was the clerk. The only thing I even had circled was, on that one was 5,000 for contractual services. Went up from 3,000.
I mean, he didn't.
Yeah.
Clarify.
Clarify, yeah. Because I have no notes on it otherwise.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does anyone have anything specific they want to call out? I mean, just to save us some time before we just flip through every page. I didn't know if anybody already knew something to call out or not that you wanted to go ahead and increase. I thought I'm trying to speed things along, but I was just wondering if anybody already had something. No, I didn't. Cause I'd be more than happy to discuss anything that somebody already had.
Sheriff Pat, your first time.
We're discussing the entire budget, anything that stands out in that.
Any, okay, so right now, Pat, you have frozen it. It's froze.
Right.
But now, anything like, for example, when they came to speak to you and they expressed a great need for something within their budget and we wrote notes down for that, you should discuss if you want to add anything in to help them get through. Yes.
And the lines that are frozen is the 2,025 total budget line? Or is it the adopted budget?
225 total budget line, no. 225 adopted budget. 225 adopted budget.
Adopted budget, okay.
Okay, so I'm going to throw out an example. Turn to page three, the treasurer's office. She expressed a great need in her postage line item due to the postage increase. So she asked for the postage to go from 17,538 to 18,767. I wrote that one down. I mean, other people may have, you know, I, I left the room some of the time, so I mean, I have everything.
I just, I was going to bring that one.
Yeah.
That's a good example.
I think there's others going to be with postage too, individuals, yeah.
No one could control it, obviously, we all know that.
Federal government.
Looking at that, should we increase all postage lines?
I, I wouldn't make that grand statement. I would look and see how they're spending, maybe some of them are already over budgeted.
True.
So.
Just making the assumption that they were not.
I understand, but you never know.
Do we need to make individual motions on?
Yes, well, consensus agreement, just like, I agree to keep it at 18,7 or something, some sort of statement.
All of them are the same, except we would vote on any changes.
And you don't have to vote, you just have to direct me. You don't have to sit here and say, I make a motion.
Okay.
If you're majority in agreement, yeah.
She did pull that out as a special need, so it's quite a thousand dollars difference. So just make, raise that up a thousand dollars?
Okay, so when you say I'm going to raise it a thousand dollars, I'm going to make it 18,538.
She asked for.
18,767.
Yeah, let's go with that.
I'm just saying.
With the postage going up, we probably shouldn't go with what she asked on, as far as the postage.
She, she knows how much she's going to send out, she's, she's aware of that, so.
Okay, so you want it to be 18,767, all right.
Okay. Next would be the recorder.
So the property tax, oh, I'm sorry, we're still.
Yeah, we're. No, we froze it unless something stood out.
Well, I just saw something else, it was vendors estimate on this, it's 17,664.
And, and again, you discussed that, that's absolutely, it's just I didn't highlight that one because obviously she didn't, yeah.
The mail, the postage. Going back the audit of the postage, adopted budget's 12,000, total budget's 11,900. They've only expended 5,000, so you're leaving that at 12, then?
It, it is frozen.
Okay.
Now, if you want to make a motion that you're going to freeze everything unless they lowered it, you're going to take the lower amount, then I would take the lower amount.
Since I've expended five, that should do the 12.
You okay? Back to the treasurer.
Pat, did you have?
Yes, that was the treasurer's on the software. Vendor estimate, it's going to go up. And it's highly likely. So I think we should approve that request. I think that should be increased.
The only thing is, Pat, I mean, you can say that if you want, it's fine. If you look at the travel expense line, she was budgeted 1,300 and not spent anything.
So she could get it somewhere.
She could make a transfer.
She could make a transfer, yeah. You okay?
Frozen then.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not supporting an increase. I mean, there's money there, there would be money for a transfer to pay it, yeah. Okay, moving down to the recorder. I didn't have anything circled on that at all.
Neither did I.
Okay.
Nothing on the sheriff?
Nothing on the sheriff. Surveyor.
Okay, let's discuss the surveyor for a minute.
Surveyor, yeah.
Just so, a couple of things, just so you're aware. So you know, he was wanting to increase the cume drain rate. And of course, you know, you increase the cume drain rate, then you've got to lower another property tax rate, which obviously we can't afford to do. To, in order to alleviate that, I would like to pull the salaries that are paid from cume drain and move them into the surveyor budget. I think there's two. To free up what's in cume drain so he can spend it on projects instead of salaries. Is that okay?
Save us from having to reduce a levy.
Correct, because basically it offsets that. It offsets you shifting a levy.
There was some other levy that was discussed to help, somewhere Farm Bureau meeting.
When we get to the budget, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you. But the other thing I wanted to tell you is, he is coming to the September meeting to request equipment to be purchased from the rainy day fund to also try to help with the issue. You may want to do some discussion before that, once you get that with, like maybe the highway department and, and see about the, the need. Cause you know, I don't know anything about that stuff.
So what are we looking at increasing the surveyors overall?
Putting two positions in there, moving, probably increasing it $75,000 by shifting and freeing up that money for him to use on projects in his cume drain budget.
So you're going to move the two positions from cume drain to?
The surveyor.
Surveyor.
If you say that's okay. I, I was just trying to think of a way to get him some money without increasing that rate. So.
We have 400 miles of ditches he needs help with.
Okay, I think to do that, we should use the motion to move to salary position, so.
I'll make a motion to move those two positions to free up some money. He needs some help to clear those drains. He needs some help to clear those drains. In case you were flooding.
Second by Rick. Okay, all those in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yes.
We're going to move those positions over, and he's going to ask for equipment. How's that, I mean, do we want to, I'm just curious, who's, are we running the equipment?
Supposedly, he says he's going to run the equipment. I don't know.
So I was just kind of.
I don't know.
Or is he going to use that money?
He's going to tell.
Those projects to free that up to run.
Okay, so there's two things, which he's going to tell you about.
I just hate to put any extra stress on the county general.
He's going to tell you about that at the September meeting as far as who's going to operate the equipment and everything. By freeing up the money though in cume drain, he's able to contract out to have more ditches cleaned. That's what they use that money for.
Right, yeah, I understand that.
They can use the money on ditches whether or not he uses it on equipment or subcontractor.
That is correct.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries six, zero.
Six, one.
The one, I'm sorry. Next would be quarter. And that's less. And we thank you.
Do we need to unfreeze it or make it less?
I'm going to rework those, you notice how like she had needs for, but she lowered in other places, yeah, I'll rework that.
I'd like to make a comment or at least a request. If you see through the year that things are getting even worse than what we're hearing and why, please come and let us know before we get with it, so. Since we're not always aware of what's going on. Okay, assessor? I didn't have anything written down at all for.
Well, now is probably. Probably the time I need to tell you that. So the reassessment fund is running low, and the same shift needs to take place that just took place from cume drain to surveyor. I was going to move an employee or two, depending on what needed to be moved, from the property reassessment fund to the assessor budget in order to continue to fund property reassessment where it is for the future. It's not running out of money yet, but it is declining. So something needs to be done, even if it's just one employee this year, and then maybe one the next, or however you want to do it.
I'd like to see us quit reassessing myself.
So where does the money come from? General?
Not, okay, so assessor's paid from general, and property reassessment is paid from a property reassessment tax levy, which is set, right, but we're declining in that. So it's basically a shift of a position to offset, to kind of.
And shifting where to where?
Shifting from property reassessment to general assessor budget. Yeah.
So it's be an increase in the assessor's budget then?
Correct. And a decrease in the reassessment budget.
And why would this assessor need the increase in the budget?
The reassessment budget is dipping into its cash each year, and it's going to run out of money. I don't know how, you know, that's probably the easiest way to say it. So by moving a position, you're freeing up money within reassessment and applying it to the assessors. Now, another way to do that is reduce one levy, increase another, but in order to do that, in order to increase the property reassessment budget or levy, you're going to have to decrease the general levy, so this is easier by just shifting an employee over.
So it still sounds like the extra, we call it extra money, that the moving of the money ends up in the assessor's budget? Yes or no?
Yes.
But for the employee.
But that employee then also moves to the assessor's budget. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, that's what you said.
I think.
Okay, doesn't it make sense?
Yeah, they're, right now, let's just say they're, I mean, they're at 400, they've requested 416,000, let's just call it 400,000 dollars. Those two, those two employees, let's say that between the two of them, it's 80,000 dollars for both count and benefits, so it'll be 480. So, yeah, so.
But then the reassessment budget will lower. And you said the bid came in a little bit higher for reassessment? Yeah, so we. Yeah, so we have to budget accordingly for that in reassessment, so.
And I'm working on the sales disclosure, it's very limited, I don't want to extend it on, but I think we can find someone to lead with that.
And that would be wonderful, like some extensions from there. Good, yeah.
My grandson's bawking.
Okay, since it's another salary position, I'll ask for a motion to, what are you suggesting, one?
Ah, two.
Two, to move two employees.
Am I not on?
Your mic wasn't on.
Oh, we could all hear you pass, wasn't a problem.
Well, thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Rick.
Second.
Second by Rob. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven, zero. Prosecutor, have any problems and nothing on that? Nothing written down there?
Prosecutor was the same too.
Extension Services.
Counsel is the same. Well, we know this budget isn't the same.
Was that counsel?
No, the next one.
Oh, commissioner? It's so small, I can't read it.
I know. Okay, just to, before you get started, I have a handout for you. Mainly wanting to talk about animal control. So your first, the first sheet is on the front of the handout. I tried to come up with a budget for just animal control, like, so that we can pull that out and look at that at one time, okay? And I based that on the second budget that Debbie turned in and their expenditures to date, they're very similar to the numbers that Debbie submitted for you. I also attached is Debbie's budget that she turned in to you guys, exactly, and how it broke down. And as you notice, what I've done is I've taken all the salaries and, well, let me do it this way, because there's other, so supplies, fuel, utilities, grounds and parking, buildings, and vehicle repair maintenance, I've moved to the courthouse budget. And then the remainder of the lines are new animal control line items in the commissioner's budget. That is the number that I came up with. And you guys, do as you see fit.
So the number that you come up with is the six?
608,382.
Requested 623 back.
Yeah, I mean, it was hard, I feel like I got all hers, yeah, 623,535.
So actually, when we started this year, there was not an animal control.
No, there was an animal control budget, had, is that in here? I hope it's in here. Yes, it's in here, it looks like this.
The budget for 2025 was 341,830.
I'm going to run you a copy of it.
It's not in your group.
Yeah, I think that she thought she had the copy and that, but you didn't, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, so 341,830 for 25. And I came up with 608,382, Debbie came up with 623,535, it's very similar, so.
So on this, I guess I'll just start talking, right?
Sure.
I know we've got a lot to talk about animal control and everything, and several of us have gone to the War Humane Society. Pat and Greg and I did it today, they pronunciated yesterday. Rick? Anyway, a lot of discussion, it seems like the War Humane Society is open to working with Ford County Animal Control, it seems vice versa. And I know the commissioners here, here in the audience, the, Sarah, is anyone, I thought Terry was here? He was? You guys have been, you're working on, everybody knows there's issues, right? Everybody's kind of on, trying to get on the same page. And we know we need to fund animal control, obviously, I think everybody agrees with that. The question is, how much? So, you know, to rehash what we've been through, we're going to try to create a budget based on expenses over the last couple of years. That's kind of what has happened. I think the number's a lot larger than any of us imagined it would be. That's not to say anybody's doing anything wrong or anything like that, it's just a big number. You know, really big number. So looking at this, and what I'm wondering is, since we know that the commissioners are working on it, is it possible for us to appropriate half a budget, or, you know, enough to cover six months? Let's say the 623, we cut it to, you know, whatever, 310, 315, knowing that we're going to have to readdress this in six months, that maybe there's a plan put in place. I'm just, these are questions, guys.
Thinking about plans, there's all kinds of scenarios. I mean, could we use the Humane Society contractual for a lot of the no-kill situations? And then the animal control be basically for the mean dogs, dog bites, mean animals? Health issues, yes, side of it, which would be less employees? And also, there's been some discussion too about the new building, wondering, this is me wondering, I think some others may be wondering the same thing, if we could renovate a little bit of whatever and clean up whatever we have, if we choose to go that route with a contract with Humane Society to help us out and take that bond issue and maybe hold it to apply towards the county highway garage or something else, it would take us having to pass another ordinance to redirect that, which is some thoughts.
So, and.
State your name, please.
I'm a Ford County Commissioner. So that lines up very closely with where my head is, with the discussions that we've had, that I've had with Ron, that I've had with Chris. And not to get the cart before the horse, but we are looking at a model.
Sarah, would you kind of speak into the microphone?
I'm coming through muffled. That is the model that we're looking at. There's another community that is in the process of doing the same thing, where they maintain, I don't even know what they, I have a call tomorrow to find out exactly what it is and how they're managing theirs. But my thought process is, we do exactly that, we keep the health aspect of it, the rabies vaccines, the following up on the health and human services part of animal control, and then turn to one of the humane societies, it takes a village, one of those, or more than one, depending on what their capacity is, for the actual housing of the animals and adopting out, so that takes that burden off. So that's exactly what it is that we're looking at right now. I know that the community that is working towards it now made that announcement in January, and they're in August, and they still have not transitioned that full to implement it, which is why I think Chris is saying maybe a partial budget for next year. So, because it will take some time, we'll have to look at the legalities of it, and it's great that we do have, you know, an organization willing to partner with us. But it's going to, you know, nothing moves quickly in government. But I think, I think we all kind of are in the same thought.
Yeah, I think so too, I agree with that. Would that help, or is that not helpful to budget enough to cover half a year?
No, I think it would definitely help with, I think as long as we all have the understanding that, you know, we still want to hold some responsibility to the public as far as the safety when it comes to the animals, as well as responsibility to the animals themselves. And just looking at how that's going to happen, that we're not completely abandoning either of those. I do know by statute, you don't have to have animal control in the county in Indiana, and that's not where we want to be, and that's not the message that we want to give the public. It's not the message I want to give the public. So to, you know, just to have the funds there and acknowledge that, you know, we don't know what next year this time is going to look like, but we are looking to solve this problem.
This question more to everybody, or should we, should we fund an entire year? You know, decide on an amount for that?
Do we have the money?
When I, and I will tell you, I will tell you as, when I was coroner, you know, as you can look back at my budgets, you know, I was never one to spend it just because it was there. You know, there was money at the end of the year that I always went back. And that's how this would be looked at as well, you know, with the understanding that the goal is just what we've just kind of laid out tonight. And maybe if it is simpler, easier, cleaner to budget for the full year, that doesn't mean that they're going to, you know, buzz right through that entire year.
I'm not sure about whether we have to advertise, to go ahead and advertise it for the full year, but approve half a year. Some of us have visited the Humane Society, made a couple of visits there and talked with Lindsay. I've also been out to the Dog Pound and talked to Monica, she's working under very difficult circumstances, and she was very helpful, but I think there are things that could be done to ease perhaps some of the problems. They don't take credit cards out there, which they should. It's a great way to keep record of, of dogs that are being adopted. And the fee, you know, you can add that to, the fee, most of our offices take it. And in visiting with her, talked about that. And for the number of dogs that were out, I think there was 21 when I visited there, Humane Society had 50. And they're getting ready, they're building a new building, and I'm absolutely pro-animal and not anti, but I think we have to look at long term and look at previous budgets and how much it's costing now versus prior. It just seems like, especially since I keep hearing we're having a shortfall and we're not going to have the money that we anticipated in previous years. So to spend, you know, this much, and I think there's some other things that if we had MOU, are the commissioners would work with the Van Rowde people?
Yeah, and I, and I agree, and I think some of, some of the issue with animal control right now is that because they're, because it's not a requirement of the state, there's not a lot of guidance as far as what we, I want to say what we have to do statutorily as far as animals that are out there, what we take in versus maybe what we don't, and things like that. So I think that some understanding. So I think that some understanding or a development of some protocol would be helpful so that we don't get to the point where we have, I think, ninety-eight animals out there right now or something.
And I have been doing some research on that, on the state requirements and things that are happening. And it would, it would take a little more research because I would really like to see, I attended the Humane Society on Sunday, one of their fundraisers, and they have, once a month there, and they have other fundraisers to compensate for, because they are, they get grants from Women's Club and such, so.
Everything you're saying, very, very good points, very true. And we all realize that animal control is kind of a fluid thing. There's going to be a lot of variables, a lot of movement and things like that. I think your first question that you asked was, can this, this budget of six twenty-three, can, can that work, Crystal?
Oh, six oh, six twenty?
Whatever, six oh, six oh eight.
I'm going to be honest, I'm going to tell you exactly what I told Brad. At this point, anything that you're doing is dipping into the cash. We're using our cash reserve to fund. So we're not, you know, it's not sustainable for a period of time.
Figure out some changes, like Pat's saying.
Yes.
And that's where this whole, kind of gave birth to this idea of doing a half a year.
Yep.
I don't want to kick this down the road though, guys. Let's deal with it, you know? But if this is the right way to deal with it, then let's do it.
If you did have a year, what would be your goal?
To have an agreement between Work Animal Control and another facility to relieve some of the pressure from Work Animal Control.
Right, and I think we, I think that is still yet to be developed. But I think a lot of, I think somewhere in, in all, in the growth out there, we've lost sight of, and this is probably not going to be very popular to say, we've lost sight of the fact that we have an animal control, not a Humane Society.
Yes.
And we need to treat it as animal control. And that is a responsibility to the public. And then we need to find a way to make sure the animals are taken care of, but...
We agree about the safety of the citizens and animal control in that fact. But I think something could be worked out. I think they, down there to manage, and I forgot how many dogs that they get adopted every year, what they do, fifty puppies in foster care. I mean, they are working it, and they only have two full-time people.
Right. And they do, I mean, they are blessed with lots of volunteers. People want to volunteer for the Humane Society. It's a little different when you think about, you know, animal control and...
And they have a lot of part-timers. They have fifteen part-timers, which fill in all the other spots, because they're open on Saturday and Sunday.
Right.
So I think we need to...
It's just, it's a different model. It's just a completely different model. And we are trying to, you know, shove animal control into a Humane Society model. And the Humane Society was born for a reason, and this is why.
You mentioned once...
What we have, operate different actions or kind. We're getting, they won't take estrays, our volatile animals and try to do something with them. They're just taking in animals and then adopting them. And they can fundraise, we cannot. And that does help, because we've talked about it. I met with Monica for two hours today about different things that could possibly be done. But I think that I ask the question, when is enough? And what do we do with that overflow? How long do we keep? How do we get rid of them? They're giving a lot to both Humane Societies, but right now, they're not taking them, especially until we get them, get the rabies, bat neutered, get it calmed, and then they'll take them.
But to be contracted with them would be different.
Right.
To be contracted to do those things would be different.
And these decisions are all going to have to go to the commissioners.
Well, yeah, the commissioners are going to do the MOU or contract.
That's why it's important we work together.
That's why, yeah, and I agree, but I, I can't...
Just give them a timeframe they can work with.
And that's why if we fund, because we're taking it out of reserve, because the money won't be there. So to me, the six hundred, over half a million dollars is unrealistic, considering previous budgets and such. I, I don't know, except maybe it's, it's staff. I'm not sure where it lies, but...
I think the services provided to the animals has grown.
You know, you could have a lot of hard-time people working and pay them adequately, more economically.
We can't, we can't, we can't fill the positions, we can't. I mean, the positions are open. Which is another reason to try to cut this back some.
Are the animals out there, as far as the ones that are actually, are we just taking drop-off? So if I decide I don't want my dog anymore, I just drop it off out there? That doesn't really...
That's the policies that I'm saying we have to look at. We don't have strict, you know, strict guidelines for taking...
Those need to be taken to someone who's, I mean, and I, I'm all for not just, you know, dropping something in a, you know, and just, you know, killing every dog that comes in or turning them away, but I mean, we can't...
That's what I said.
Yeah, I mean, because I feel like we're running a, you know, a homeless shelter for pets here. And that's kind of where we're at.
I agree completely, and, and that's why I said, I feel like it is, we are trying to, we have grown into, you know, a Humane Society.
Yeah, and I feel like that was something too. During one of our other council meetings, the, who's the manager out there?
Monica.
Yeah, she came up here and just basically told us that we were going to have to hire more people. This wasn't going to be sufficient. We were going to be getting more, you know, we were going to have to do this, we were going to have to do that. I don't really feel like people coming up and just telling us that we have to do this, especially when there's not a requirement or something in place. I feel like that doesn't really set a good, I don't know, a good vibe with people. Perhaps not with me, for sure. But I think, you know, I think what we're talking about here, coming up with some kind of arrangement, I'm going to make a motion now for a six-month of two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Let me, can I back?
Since nobody's even seconded.
Write down for salaries.
Okay, that's where, that's where I'm going.
Okay.
Can we, can, can our motion be to approve the salaries and the benefits the way they're written and half the, all the other services line items? All the, all the...
Contractual services, overtime.
Anything that's not a one-thousand number.
That makes sense.
Is that, is that okay? Because, you know, you've got to fund the salaries and, yeah.
Well, what about the, I mean, the overtime, do we fund that as well?
Now, that one, you, I, I had it already halved.
Okay.
Had overtime halved, and then anything from overtime down, I had halved.
I'll make that, I'll, I'll adjust my motion to state that.
Okay, that makes me feel better.
Want you to throw that?
I haven't added it, Rick.
I was at two, I think I was at two, I was at two seventy-one was what I had. Now, that was just me doing my gazentas and my shoes were still on.
It's going to take me a minute, because I don't have a good calculator here, so.
Well, do we, I guess we can just wait on the numbers.
Well, we do, because we don't have a second yet, so.
As I understand it also, the, that, in reading through some of the state things, that a no-kill is not a never-kill. There's two different things.
Yeah, I think there's a percentage. Because there are times when that is the humane thing to do.
And some dogs can't do anything with them.
Crystal, are we waiting for your number before we make a second?
You can check it out.
I happen to know, Sarah, how long the longest animal, I'll say, or the longest resident at the War County?
Probably a year, I think.
A year?
Don't we have one that's been out there almost a year?
I think, I've asked for that.
I can't, I, I know. Yeah, we were having a hard time getting it.
Probably a big dog.
With all the salaries.
I thought we was, I was waiting for Crystal's number. He was going to retract that, but I was going to second what Brad, Brad's motion.
That's two positions, yeah.
But I think it would behoove, you know, the commissioners to talk to Lindsay and their board and to work out something where, because even the Humane Society, they're taking...
Insurance probably isn't going to be the main one.
...dogs, because they get adopted from Union County Kentucky.
Sure.
And they have a mobile unit vet that only charges a hundred-and-twenty dollars.
Star County is not taking animals.
And so there are a number of things.
The goal, the goal in my mind would be that they would reserve a certain percentage of their kennel space for animals that we would have normally taken. So they would almost, like, to contract with us and to get a certain amount of money, then they would have to guarantee space for the animals that we would need.
We've got a number four, four...
Nope.
Sorry.
Since we have such a hard time keeping part-time people, do we need to bump the part-time salary to attract more? Can we do that?
I don't think it's that. I mean, it's fifteen, fifty an hour.
Their positions are kennel tax, and nobody wants to be a kennel tax.
You get a number yet?
Just a minute, thirty thousand. Right? I keep, I'm trying to answer questions.
You can take thirty off of that, so that would be four sixty.
Four sixty-two?
I don't know where I can put my...
I know, that's why I said, I don't, I don't want to be locked into this number. That's why I didn't want the number.
Do you want to just maybe make the motion for the salaries and then half of everything else and then figure it out?
It's around four sixty.
Four sixty-three, yeah, around.
How much?
Four sixty-three.
So last year was budgeted three forty-one, and this would be four sixty-three.
And that's for six months?
That's for, that's for salaries all year.
Salaries all year.
Rest of it.
And the rest of it half.
And benefits.
Yes, salaries and benefits. That's health insurance benefits and everything.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So the total estimate is what?
Around four sixty.
You said they're not...
Hang on, hang on, hang on. I've got a motion. Do I still have a second?
Yeah.
I have a motion by Brad, second by Rob. So now, we can have discussion. We can have discussion.
That doesn't mean we can ask the commissioner questions. Oh, okay, all right.
Can I say something?
You may be sick of your motion.
I, I will tell you that the commissioners are committed to monitoring that spending more closely so that it's not just kind of a free-for-all. So even with it being the four-hundred thousand or whatever...
In some being...
Yeah, the goal, the goal is for it not to be at the level that it's been this year so far.
Okay.
And discussion on the motion.
That's what I was going to say. Includes the, if you look at the top of your yellow sheet, if you go all the way down to group, it starts at the top and goes to group insurance. And then Crystal's made a little bit of adjustment, she thought, on the group insurance from one-twenty to a little smaller number. That's what that motion includes, is those first, those first three, four, five, six, seven items there.
So the total you came up with is?
Four six, we'll say four sixty for now.
So basically, Pat, the motion is approve the salaries and benefits as is, with the two-point-five percent raise, like everyone else, starting with overtime animal control, halving all of those numbers that are on this sheet.
Or the other line items.
And it, it's around four sixty-two.
With the hopes that, you know, as we'd said, that some of that other stuff. And, you know, could we go back, even though, I know this was that...
Really fast, I mean, I may have made a mistake, so.
Greg had mentioned earlier, and I don't know if this would play into the motion or anybody's consideration, but about that bond and the geo-bond. And I don't know where that money might get reallocated from the, the new building there.
No, that's not going to be part of this.
No, but I was just, yeah, I guess that's true.
Yeah. That's going to be a separate issue. Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor? Two, three, four, five. All opposed? Pat and Rick, five to two.
We will be good stewards.
Okay. And we will be watching closely.
On the salary line item, you're going to take the twenty-five amount and then two-and-a-half percent more, is that what you're basically doing?
Well, no. There's more to it than that. They have longevity. I calculate their salaries first and then I plug them in. So if they have longevity, you know, they get two-and-a-half percent and they get their longevity. Then they also get like a, if they have an education stipend. So then it actually, their salary gets put into that line item, okay? And that's what, another reason I said that estimate is four sixty-two. I feel like I already calculated these salaries for twenty-six, but I can't remember for sure if I did. So it could fluctuate a little bit. I just, yeah. Okay. Okay, so with that said, so you got that one out of the way. So now if you go to the book, I think, I thought I gave you a printout. Did I? I did an average for you to try to come up. It doesn't look like I did. So let, so let's just take their line items, if you don't mind. So go all the way down to their general, general supplies line item, two-one-one-zero-zero. Okay? I estimated that they would need about seventy-five hundred in that line item. Last year was five thousand. What would you like for me to budget?
Five thousand.
Okay.
No, that's just me. No one else said anything, so.
General Supplies.
And I don't see that line.
Two-one-one.
General Supplies, two-one-one-zero-zero.
Third column is your numbers.
I estimated they would need seventy-five hundred. Last year, you budgeted five thousand.
That's two-one-one.
Yeah, General Supplies.
So we've had it five thousand?
I'm asking, what do you want me to do?
Okay, I thought she said two-one-zero-zero, okay. Okay, got it.
With not half the year used, they already had twenty-five hundred.
I, yeah, I've estimated that they needed seventy-five hundred in the line item.
Probably a good estimate.
What would you like it to be?
I'll go along with the five.
Okay.
Wait a minute, you're going to go along with the five, but I thought Greg said seventy-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have two for five. Anyone else?
I'm, I'm, I'll go, you're probably right with your estimate, but I'll go for five. We'll see what happens.
Okay. So we just leave it ten?
All right, other services and charges? You budgeted sixty. I had you needed more like sixty-five. Probably even more. I felt like sixty-five was being very conservative.
So they've already used fifty-seven, seven sixty-nine?
Mm-hmm. Now, just so you know, though, animal control, part, part of animal control's coming out of that line item and we've, we're house budgeted. So this, this would just be for their budget.
Just for their budget only, yeah.
What'd you say that you would estimate it at?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. But again, we pulled animal control out of there, so if you want to leave it at sixty, we could do that too.
My comment's going to be to freeze everything. That's just me, I'm not going to keep saying, I won't keep repeating myself over and over, but I'm going to say to freeze everything.
There are some of these realistically are not under-budgeted, for sure.
It might be, but I think my...
Might not be too.
Well...
No, they are. They are. It takes a lot for me to say that.
I know.
Okay. So we're freezing it, sixty?
That's just me. I'm not speaking for everybody else.
I agree.
That's just my comment, and I'm not saying anything more about that budget.
I'm okay. We'll freeze it.
Freezing that one. Okay, hold on. Legal services. Okay, so of course, in twenty-four, you spent two forty-one. You budgeted a hundred thousand. They've already spent, which more now, because she's got more bills in, but one seventy-three, nine sixty-four. I estimated they needed two eighty. Anybody?
Debbie, you keep shaking your head, but that doesn't help.
Hopefully, things are settling down.
Right, which I, right, I tried to be realistic.
It's what's happening. That's not the point of what's happening.
Do you want to budget any more for that line item than a hundred thousand?
Debbie, are you seeing a reduction in the attorney fees? Are you a little bit?
A bit.
Yeah, things should be settling down a little now.
What do you, what would you like that number to be?
What we would like it to be?
Well, what, what are you going to budget for that?
One forty.
Greg says one forty.
I think what I do, what do your average there in the months? I know money's not there, I know.
Yeah, you gotta take that into consideration, right?
Yeah.
I'm agreeing with Greg.
I'll go with Greg, one forty.
So we went with what?
One forty.
One forty.
Okay.
Okay, contract services, mental health is set, it's gonna be six fifteen oh eighty-three.
We already know that's what it's gonna be.
Yep.
Yeah.
What'd you say the number was?
Six fifteen zero eight three.
Okay, that's not what, I'm on the wrong, what line item is it?
Down, go down a couple.
Is it three one four seven oh?
Yep, three one four seven oh.
Where's the six?
It's, it's set. I've said it. I mean, it's not me that said it. Kate said it and I.
Said it, yeah. Six what?
Six one five zero eight three.
So you've got some extra pull of the stake.
Yeah, I know. I have no idea even how that number is set. I just know that's the number they sent me.
I don't think anybody's mistaken.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you should have probably, no.
Okay, so here's the true one I wanted to discuss. The juvenile detention line item. You know, the commissioners have no control over that, right? It's a court. Two ninety-two is the number I came up with. I think Debbie came up with two ninety-one, two ninety-two. Yeah, I know, two ninety-two.
Yeah, we've already spent one fifty-five and that's not even half a year yet.
Yeah, you can't, I'll, I'll get off my freeze wagon for that one. You can't do anything about it.
Yeah.
Okay, the other one, I know we're freezing, but the other one I want to talk about is the communication line. It's always been under budgeted. And they spent eighty thousand in twenty-three, seventy-one in twenty-four, and you only budgeted forty-five for twenty-five. They've already spent the entire budget. I predict they need eighty thousand.
This is not cell phones.
No, that's communication, like all the phones that, phone lines for this building, that building.
Did you ever get a handle on all this?
I, I will tell you something that is affording me. I'm going to be doing a plan this week for eight thousand dollars for all landlines.
Maybe we need to get rid of some of the landlines. I mean, I'm just, I mean, I mean, that's my whole thing with all, with all of, like, with some of these things. I mean, just because the, it comes to us. I mean, and I know it's like after the fact, the bill's already paid. I've already ran out of gas, so I don't have any gas in my car, so I gotta put gas in it. But I mean, you know, maybe we look at dropping twenty lines that we don't, I mean, who, I mean, I don't know. I mean, that's the stuff that we need, I think we need to look at because we're.
Just for dispatch and scales light and the elevator telephone. Now, there's past due ones that I didn't know weren't paid in May and June, so that's jacked it up. But each of those lines are almost seven hundred a month, each of those five. So I met with T-Mobile today. I gave them our bills. They're reviewing the landlines. I'm meeting with them Friday after AT&amp;T gives me an inventory to try to get all those down. But I, I can't tell you, T-Mobile said they could get the landlines down. I don't, I don't know how or what, but they're supposed to give me.
Well, we were promised a few years ago that people were gonna walk on water and save us all this money, and that never happened either. I think I'm waiting for some other certain place to freeze over before we get that back, but anyway.
I wish we could get something done with whatever's needed to connect to Main Street. It just seems to be sitting there.
And I have, I do have a proposal, have a proposal on that. I don't think you'll see it, but I do have that for the equipment to connect, and that's what Rob with NetSavvy is doing. And I'm supposed to submit that proposal to commissioners to look at, of course, I'm not gonna tell them to prove it till we've done the council for the money. It's gonna be, it's gonna be quite a bit. And then there's gonna be a monthly fee following it.
The way I understood it, that was going to clear up all, we wouldn't have the phone fees. We wouldn't have the internet fees. We were to be connected.
Phone fee. I mean, I don't know. The only thing T-Mobile told me today was there was some kind of a connection thing that could bring the lines down, but you have to have the landlines made a lot for the dispatch.
Yeah, that's a different story out there. But I'm talking about the courthouse and the judicial center was supposed to be basically a free service. It was in the contract. It was originally, the county put four million dollars into Main Street, and that was written somewhere in a contract. You might check with Steve and see what the, for some clarity on that.
Yeah, I don't think they have any of these too. Unfortunately, from what I've investigated, it's gonna take more. I understand why they're doing it. But our phone bills, landlines here are not to AT&amp;T. We pay Midwest Telecom and the Newso is the other that the sheriff has. There are a lot of communication bills. I don't quite understand them all. I'm just trying to reduce what I can.
What if you do a happy medium and go like fifty-five?
What'd you say, sixty-five?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Instead of eighty thousand, fifty-five?
Well, you budgeted forty-five last year and she's trying to reduce the bill, and you give them ten thousand dollars more.
But you just said you have an eighty thousand dollar bill now?
Eight thousand.
Eight, okay.
Was it eighty thousand spent in twenty-three and seventy-one and twenty-four? I don't know why.
It's gonna be eighty this year.
Why was it forty-five last year? I don't have any clue.
Well, then throw a number out, guys. And gals. I'm used to saying guys, Pat, I'm sorry.
That's alright. I fit right in. Put my cowboy boots or something.
We oughta stick with the eighty. And if we don't spend it, that would be just wonderful.
I know.
Well, she'll transfer somewhere else.
Get a good spend.
That's true.
So are we leaving it at eighty or fifty-five? Eighty.
Eighty.
They said eighty.
Is that okay with everybody? I'm just thinking reality.
I'm too. Debbie's trying to get some of it down and go ninety-five, you know, but what's the difference, right?
Alright, those were some of the ones that stood out, and the rest, I think, probably are okay too. Go from there.
Just one question. Did we get the cell phones? Inventory, knowing who's what?
Them, but the AT&amp;T's giving me their inventory Friday to compare to their own lot.
When we had people who have cell phones who no longer work here and.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so once I meet with them, and lots of fleet, which I understand are tagged on vehicle. You know, where they are, hotspots, iPads, so, yeah.
Got me, I've got an iPad. I've got a hotspot in my pocket.
Those fall under communications.
Those are under cell.
Under cell phones.
Cell phones, boy.
That's not communication, that's why I'm saying.
It's another category.
Alright.
Well.
You okay with that?
Neither of us.
I see, it's right below it.
Yeah. Okay. Move on?
Yeah. Plan commission, they froze.
Plan commission, froze.
Mm-hmm.
Data processing.
It's fine.
Courthouse.
What page is that, please?
Uh, sixteen.
Remember in courthouse that I added, you know, all these, I'm gonna be adding all these animal control lines. And the only thing that stood out truly for me in this one was the utilities.
That's what I've got circled.
So, I, I think Debbie estimated, sixteen, two thirty-three is what she estimated.
It'll definitely go over two hundred thousand.
I, I mean, I'm thinking like two-ten maybe to get us going and then see from there.
Two-ten's fine with me.
Yeah. I'm okay. Anything else? Okay.
So it went to what?
Two-ten.
Yeah, I had a note in here and probably I may have missed it, but at one point when we were discussing this before, part of that was for animal control.
Animal control's gonna have its own line item in there.
I know it does now, but from my notes before, animal control was in part of that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So it will, it will have its own. Superior Court.
Same.
One and two.
Yeah. Circuit, same.
Circuit Court. Public defender.
Uh, he, I had a note that he absolutely needed that extra ten thousand
Yep.
in legal services because something about ten case maximum capacity, I don't know.
Stay, keep them below two hundred, two hundred cases. Otherwise, they're gonna be in trouble. So.
Okay.
So what's the line item was that?
Yeah, it was legal services.
Three one two zero zero.
Page twenty.
So it's eighty thousand now?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not much of an increase, but that's gonna keep them to where they're not told what to do and how much to spend.
EMA is the same. Central Dispatch is going to look a lot different because I'm moving a bunch of those dispatchers to public safety in order to save money, in order to fund all this other stuff that you've just agreed to do.
Yes, L O two.
And that Central Dispatch, is that the nine-one-one, getting a, you know, a department head for that or?
It's in there.
Someone's gonna have to make those decisions.
It's in there. The depart, that position is in there.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, do we pay overtime pay on that?
On, on.
Dispatch, that's fourteen thousand.
Yes, yes. We have, yes, always, for years.
Have enough people that you wouldn't have to overtime shop.
I'm not gonna really argue with dispatchers having to work over because jail is basically, oh. Basically the same, but his utilities line item also increased, but mainly he said he doesn't know what the new jail.
If it comes online, he's not sure what it's gonna be.
So, do you want me to leave the one ninety-one he asked for then?
I would.
Okay.
I hope it.
Yeah, because we'll have two buildings in operation.
I know. I know. Okay. Child support was the same. Economic development.
Office equipment was. Remember, we gotta, we don't know what it is.
In what?
And under child support.
No, I mean, they didn't discuss it.
Didn't discuss it, it's only a thousand dollars to you.
No, we're freezing it because we didn't.
Okay, it won't be, got it. Still.
Economic development.
Development.
Work was same, per perpetuation, convention of tourism was the same.
That's gonna get better.
Sales disclosure is the same. You guys, are we caught up? I felt like I was getting.
I'm the Kim bridge.
Yeah, it looks good.
And Kim cap.
Um, I had some sort of note here.
There was an error, ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I mean. Let's see. Oh, he asked for the new, that bridge. That's what it was, the bridge. It'll hold what it'll hold.
Yeah.
So. Kume drain, we talked about how we're gonna move those employees.
Right.
And, and then, do you want me to take the leftover money and put it in the contractual services line or just leave it at seventy-five thousand that he requested? Probably leave it at seventy-five.
Leave it, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Same. Same.
Look, be the same. I want to know.
Health, of course, had all sorts of changes, but I, but it turns out to be the same budget. Does that make sense?
So the seven sixty-two?
I mean, it's with the raises counted in that, you know, seven sixty-two plus raises, so it'll be more than, yeah.
Only thing I had starred was the contractual services, eighty-four thousand to ninety-four thousand. That was a question mark.
It is, Dr. Harris. Yeah, but they also lowered other things in order to offset that.
Okay. Is that an increase in her? She went up from.
Thousand dollars.
I don't know. Do you know if her contract increased?
Not yet. No, it's still the same, thirty-five per.
Well, then we should leave that at eighty-four, right?
Leave it the same.
They haven't, yeah, okay. So I'll leave that at eighty-four. With health, that's lower. And the landfill, post-closure, we're gonna increase that because the fees are continuing to go up and that way maybe Debbie won't have to keep coming back.
What page is that?
Uh, thirty-seven.
They do it every year.
But I mean, you guys offset that money years and years and years ago, so hopefully it lasts.
So it's forty-five thousand's what?
Uh, so that was the published, thirty-five thousand was her request.
No, thirty-five.
And she still may have to be that, hopefully not. Okay, local road and street, if you remember, on his equipment line, he needed that five hundred thousand for that additional lease purchase for some sort of vehicle. I can't remember what it was now. Was it a Grader?
Was it a Grader? I think it was a Grader.
Or something.
Grader, yeah.
Yeah. So are you okay to leave the five hundred?
Yes.
For, for a new Grader, is that what it was for?
I.
I think that's what it's for.
I can't remember the piece of equipment.
You got two Grader's sitting out there now.
It, it may not have been that. It was, it was, he has all these lease purchases and that is a total dollar amount he needs to pay for all his lease purchases. And the other thing is he increased the road sign line item from twenty to twenty-five. He said he had, like, some signs hadn't been replaced for however many years. Remember, he talked about that too. Are you okay with those?
Yes.
Twenty-five and five. Okay. Uh, the.
You may sure, on public safety?
I think it was.
I didn't have anything on here.
Other than the bond payment increase, misdemeanor. I didn't see anything specific with the highway. So it'll be frozen.
Anything on it, no. Flatbook, nothing?
Frozen.
Rainy day.
Okay, rainy day. We will continue to pay the election equipment. And that, well, I, I found out, just a little information, I'm getting really tired if you guys can tell, so. Um. Forty-five. So Patty had come to you and said that they needed to enter that contract for the new voting machines, a three-year contract. But Mike says that she never entered the contract. So he asked me the other day what was budgeted for, and I told him, and he's working toward a contract. Um, so right now, I mean, we wanna leave the one fifty-nine, but the contract may work out to be a little Um, so right now, I mean, we wanna leave the 159, but the contract may work out to be a little bit of a different number. So they didn't start it yet this year.
Okay. Not much we can do there then.
Just explain that when you answer extra, ready?
Yeah, yeah.
So the number is different?
We don't know yet.
Maybe different.
Maybe.
And this is on a previous contract.
A contract that was being negotiated but never was signed.
Never happened.
Is what Mike said, he, he's the only one I'm talking to. Oh.
So.
We were trying to be proactive because we knew we needed the contract for voting machines, but.
When does the new projection come out? Cause since you're doing budget, don't they give you an estimate?
Of what?
Rainy day, well, it'll be our rainy day, the.
Oh gosh, not till next. No, we've already put this year's in it.
Right.
Not till like next.
Give you an estimate of next year's.
Not, the supplemental doesn't come out for quite a long time.
Okay.
The other one comes out shortly, but the supplemental doesn't come out till like early next year.
Okay.
So we just don't know.
It's after the fact.
So they'll have the projection which may be more than what we had this year hopefully of income tax money.
It is more, but it's only like 300,000 dollars more.
Yeah.
And that's split between all, like, all municipalities and everything, so for, you know, we're talking to basically.
Twenty-eight, I believe.
I think it's 28, I'm hoping.
Yeah, three years. Hoping legislature does something.
Yes.
See how many of them get screamed at next year.
I don't think it matters.
Um.
Stormwater.
Stormwater stayed the same, but just to make you aware, Steve says that he is looking at increasing the fees, so he's working on that. So that, because he's just doesn't have enough in his project line item, he says to, in order to do the things he needs.
He was cutting 14, 10%.
So he's gonna try to get that increased.
So that, that won't, that come through us?
I think it starts at the commissioners.
Commissioners?
Um, but then I do think the council has a
Okay.
Something they have to do in it. Well, I think it starts. I think, I think the statute says though it starts with the commissioners.
Yeah.
I think then, yeah, I think then it has to come to you.
But it's considered a utility.
It's a utility.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Perpetuation, guardian in the item. Election, I just was planning to go back to basically the blue numbers other than raises.
The blue numbers, which would be 24?
No.
For election?
The same election that it was four years ago.
Mm-hmm.
So 22, that column is dark, okay.
Yes. I'm sorry, yours isn't in color.
Ours is not in color.
Mine's blue, yours is gray.
I know that, I knew that, so. Yeah, I mean, go back to 22.
And hopefully they accumulate a little cash balance from the last year.
Not a lot, but yes. Okay, election, the elect officials training final stay the same. All right, Phillic Parks, I think I stepped out of the room, but I thought, wasn't it his utilities? Um, where's his utilities line?
I had nothing on here.
It was, um.
Not a line.
Yeah, I know, but we're, okay.
The attorney's app.
Well, yeah.
Here's, well, the attorney, the attorney was added, you guys made the appropriation mid-year and so it'll be the 10,000, it's supposed to be the 10,000 each year and he did ask for it to go up next year, but right now I will just freeze that.
Yeah.
But what I wanna say on the utilities, where is that line?
Page 52B, it's the very top one.
No, that's why I can't find it. Okay, they are coming and asking for a pretty large appropriation um, at the September meeting because they've basically expended their utilities now.
It's the first thing on 52B.
Mm-hmm. So, I mean, I, do you want to increase it a little bit since you have increased the other utility line items for other departments or?
Think we need to, 60,000.
Okay.
Probably won't be enough, Greg.
Probably not, probably not.
Repair.
Go to the center point.
Yeah.
E911 is changing dramatically because I'm putting some central dispatch employees in there. Reassessment budget, we talked about how we're gonna move a couple employees out of there and Sarah has left, but I'm gonna get that exact contract number from her and now that they have the bids on that to put in there.
And that's gonna be a four-year contract, right?
I think it is, I think it's a four-year, yeah. And perpetuation, circuit, those are the same. Period.
Perpetuation.
No, just alcohol. It'll be, hang on. So the E911 fund. What page is it on, who has it for that?
53.
Thank you. Um. So Debbie, I have it being requested exactly what it was last year.
Yeah. Well, that, I'm just saying, will that be the same?
Yes. Yes, yes, sorry, I was confused on what you were asking, I thought you were saying you added something and I was like, I don't have anything down. Yes, yes. Okay, um, trial, oh. Did we miss that report on with the prosecutor on personnel?
Did we not do that one? I thought I read all of them.
Did I miss the report? From putting it on the report? Okay, I missed putting one of these on personnel. I could have sworn.
I'll take all blame.
No, it was me, although I did send it to you guys to check like three times. Okay.
Yeah, that's why I'm taking all the blame, because I should have caught that.
So the prosecutor was requesting a rece, a full-time receptionist at the base, the very base position for 2025, out of his pre-trial fund, which is a user fee fund. But also by reducing his part-time line item and his contractual services line item in order to fund it, and the committee agreed by a vote of 3-0 to approve it.
Everything's paid out of the user fee.
Everything's paid out of the user fee.
Motion to approve.
Did you say reduce?
Second.
They, he reduced his contractual services line and his, or, hang on, let me get the right line, yeah, his contractual services line and his part-time line item.
And that combined with taking out a pre-trial will pay for it?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we got a motion by me, a second by Rick to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Let me get this on this report real fast, full time.
And I did have a note in my book at home, so that's why I'm taking.
I don't know, I mean, goodness, guys, I didn't, make sure I didn't miss anything else. Um, highway, prosecutor, sheriff, court, courts, coroner, and commissioner, you know, that was it. Okay, sorry.
Where are we at now?
I'm glad we caught it though.
There we are.
Okay, so that was pre-trial, um, again, he lowered some of those lines in order to fund that.
What page are we at now?
Uh, 62, I'll do the bond payment. Um. And then, uh, the road fund is basically, I'll see, I mean, it, you know, he's got, there's many in there to do the projects, so usually you allow, it's very similar to last year.
So which line are we gonna do? The column, the 25 or adopted?
Okay, where, which.
You're, you're in, are you in Edit Road now, is that what you're talking?
Yes, Edit Road.
And I'm talking about the columns, so I, I'm putting down frozen or checked or circling stuff we changed.
Okay, so we're gonna do his requested line.
Requested.
Yeah. And of course, as long as it funds it, and I'm sure it will, I think I already ran the numbers on it. Um, on the redevelopment commission on page 66, there is not enough money to fund his request. Um, I have lowered that line, that contractual line to 9,200 and he is aware of that.
Big reduction, I mean. He's okay with it?
Well, he has to be, I mean, that's all that comes in, and he's aware that that's all that comes in.
That's all there is. Building commission?
Same. Same. Do have one thing I need to bring up.
Okay.
And I don't know exactly how it's gonna play out, but there has been an issue with community corrections. In the statute, the statute is very vague, but it kinda states that the council doesn't oversee their salaries, that the community correction board oversees their salaries. So we have never been involved in really setting their salary or their budget. Um, come to find out, um, this year, that they have not been paying their health insurance benefits out of their grant that comes in and instead so maybe their salaries are.
Overplayed it?
Maybe, so what did the attorney, I saw the email, what did the attorney?
So, I don't know, they haven't responded yet.
You're gonna have to do that, yeah.
So here's, here's my thoughts, if the, if the attorney comes back and says that the county council is responsible and does need to set the salaries and the budget, I'm gonna, I was hoping I'd have an answer by tonight, but I don't, we're gonna have to come back. Um. Not come back, but like, we can do it at a regular meeting or whatever, and, and you can let me know that. I have looked into them, I've looked into how much money they bring in, I will tell you that budgeting the salaries that they have now and health insurance, um, over budgets, the amount of revenue that comes in. So that scares me a little bit.
Problem, yeah.
Um, I don't know, so I'm, I'm kinda putting you on standby, I don't know exactly how that's gonna play, play out yet, but we may still have to look at that.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, part-time? Uh, you know, I don't know, you know, didn't know if you wanted to talk about a part-time rate and leave the part-time rate where it is. No, 15, hang on. Draft. I think it's 15, 15. Now, when we say that, there's all sorts of rates. But the typical rate is 15, 50.
Yeah.
Like a central dispatch, part-time rate though is 22, 44. Um. You know, so there is different rates, so like, instead of saying we're gonna make it whatever, we need to say increase it by 10 cents, 20 cents, whatever.
The 15, 50, that was the minimum, right?
15, 50, yes, is, appears to be the minimum.
Yeah.
And well, I don't really wanna say it's a minimum either, so the Parks Department pays up to 15, 50, so like, if he wants to start a lifeguard at 14 till they've been there a certain amount of time, you know, yeah. So, up to 15, 50.
Well, at home, 50 cents.
Well, what you.
16, is that what you're saying?
Well, you.
Well, they're not, so it'd be more net.
Here's, here's my thing.
Dispatch is higher.
There's one of two ways you can do this, you can say you'll pay more, but you won't budget more and they have to use their part-time less, or do you want me to increase both?
Is there a list anywhere of, of like, how many part-time employees work for the county or even employees, let's say?
I'm sure there is someone somewhere, but I do not have it.
Yeah. What's that, Rick?
I mean, we have this, we have this, but as far as the number of them.
I'm just, I mean, I don't need names or anything, I'm just curious.
And I guess the number really doesn't matter because they can pay them whatever they want until they run out of money. They only get a certain amount of money, so. And maybe just like five cents or 10 cents or something. 50 cents is too much.
50 cents is too much, you think?
Maybe, I mean, I don't, I don't, I can't, I can't remember what we've done in the past. Do you remember what we've done in the past, it's like the.
I've had kids work.
You've done 10 cents, you've done 15 cents, you've done 25 cents, you've done 50 cents.
So it's just.
So, it's just, yeah.
Oh, but this doesn't say how many people, does it?
No.
Well, it doesn't matter, it's, it's how many they can.
How many it's gonna hold and they're gonna run.
So we increase it by 50 cents, but their budget's gotta stay the same.
Well, then they, they can hire them, they can do one of two things, they can keep them at 15, 50, continue to work them the amount of hours that they are or they can reduce their hours and pay them 16 dollars an hour.
As long as they've got the money to do, so.
I'm thinking of trying to attract part-time. And here it is, and if the part-timers are basically freeloaders and aren't doing their job, there's people that do that.
Be hard for many part-timers lately, I've been through several.
I think part-time.
They're worth less than they were 10 years ago.
Yeah.
I think part-time people can be very useful, I utilized them in the recorder's office, I could have contracted out to do back indexing and it would have cost me 25 dollars an hour. I got ex-bankers and people that had worked at banks, which I always preferred, and of course, I pay them out of perpetuation, granted, it's different. But I would start them at 15 and, you know, within a couple of weeks, if they know what they're doing, I would pay them more, so I think 16 would be only fair, cause they don't get any other benefits and there's, they fill in when we've got people on vacations, that's what I use mine for. And back indexing, which is a tremendous amount, that's why we increased our sales, but, uh, which adds back to perpetuation, so I think 16 would be good.
I was meaning kids, by the way, teenagers.
Yes, I know.
Yeah.
Well, Parks Department's different, I, maybe, you know, kids, I'm talking about.
You're talking about adults. Teenagers, yeah, should be up to.
Up to, yeah, you could.
So we need a motion, but say a certain increase, not a, cause a lot of them are different rates, not just 15, 50.
Is this only for the county, all the county above, right?
All the county employee, part-time. Increasing.
Or up to 60.
No.
Up to 50 cents?
Up.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Motion to increase it up to fifty cents.
Up to fifty cents, and then the budget stays the same, though.
Is that, if that's what you want your motion to be?
Otherwise, we would have to increase each budget.
Then I would have to increase each budget, yes.
Whatever the fifty cents turns out to be.
Yes.
It's really all theoretical, anyway. Because they can do whatever they want with the money until it runs out.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Okay, up to fifty cents for part time.
For part time.
But don't increase the budget?
Don't increase the budget.
Okay.
I need a second.
I'll second.
You would have a pass? Second by Pat. All in favor? Seven zero.
Can anyone think of anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
I know that.
Got a second.
Okay.
All right.